All right. I'll set time for the debate, but uh our open meeting, um it's June third, two thousand thirteen at six twenty four. Um it's a good first hand on the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you see the young kid that dropped the pledge of allegiance back to school?
Didn't.
He did, yeah, yeah, he did that.
Really?
No, he was about thirteen.
Long ago.
I don't, I didn't make that last name, yeah. Yeah, it's a kid, he's ninety five percent of the same thing, you know, finally.
Oh. Excellent. Speaking of the kids, uh we should congratulate all the uh graduates from two thousand thirteen. Uh I know all the schools I think have held their graduations in our area, so congratulations everyone.
That's great.
And the parents.
And the parents. So the spending's gonna drop off around here for the next four years. Um okay, why don't we do the uh warrants real quick first because I've been having a few other things we're gonna probably go into executive session. Um so Joe, do you wanna move the payroll warrant?
Sure, so vote thirteen dash forty seven payroll. Uh one uh hundred thirty seven thousand, four hundred eleven and forty nine cents.
Yeah, I'll second that, all in favor? Aye.
I abstain on payroll warrant.
Yeah.
Yep, what's D W?
Deduction warrant.
Okay, deduction warrant, so vote number thirteen dash forty six A for a total of twenty three thousand, six hundred and thirty two and six cents.
We have a bill warrant.
Bill warrant, number thirteen dash forty eight for a total of seven hundred and twenty five thousand, nine hundred and eighty and six cents.
Second to the end.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Pretty good.
Next we have the chief and deputy in to talk to us.
Yes. Would you mind if we move up to the table?
You wanna solve it from there?
No, no, that's fine.
Phil, do you have a problem with my sitting in on this meeting? I don't know what it is exactly. I don't think it's personnel uh with the police department.
Doesn't relate to personnel, doesn't have any potential for.
Actually, it does.
It does? Cause if that's related to personnel, I would like.
If I say leave the room or sit review.
Thank you.
I will make sure yourself. I will make sure that you know, so it's looked at.
If you can.
If we can. Wow, this is big.
Okay, um I have made some bullet points that I wanna read, so I didn't leave anything out and some of it, uh most of it obviously relates to the worksheet that I gave you. And Nancy, if you'd like, when I'm done speaking, you can have a copy of this if it helps you with your minutes.
Well, thank you.
I have a lot to say in short time.
I have to have it to attach to my minutes, anything that's given out or spoken.
Okay, so just for the record, this is pertaining to a proposal to look into a safety cap?
Yes, it's actually, uh it's a two-pronged proposal, uh a safety cap and uh promoting a patrolman to sergeant. And uh again, I'll explain my bullet points here. Uh I've got by for almost one year without a personal confidential secretary. However, this has come at a cost. It has increased my workload as well as some of my personnel, including the deputy, the sergeant, the dispatchers, and resulting in less patrol times and less traffic enforcement. Whenever you bring a new employee onboard, you assume a risk, as we have experienced in the past. I would like to use my appropriated budgetary resources and utilize the personnel that I currently have on staff by simply reassigning some necessary administrative duties that are pertinent to the day-to-day operation of the police department. Therefore, I am willing to forego and sacrifice personal secretary for the betterment of the police department and the town by proposing not to replace my secretary and reinstitute a traffic safety cap as well as making a promotion of one pro- patrolman to the rank of sergeant. I can implement these changes and remain budget neutral as my worksheet shows. I have met with the finance director and he is in favor of this current proposal. The deputy and I also met with all of the police union members and they are supportive and enthused to vote my proposal. The current administrative duties will be distributed among the police department supervisors and me. The safety cap will put more of a police presence on the streets as well as address the overwhelming and increasing amount of traffic complaints that the police department has been receiving over the past year as the safety of Grovelin Residence is paramount. The sergeant promotion will be open to all current full-time patrolmen and will be transparent and unbiased. It will compr- it will be comprised of a three-phase process, including a written examination administered by Public Safety Consultants LLC and oral review board assembled with police officers from the rank of lieutenant and above from police departments outside of our area who will not know any of the candidates and uh finally a point system that will rate officers' years of service, education, and specialized training. The cost of a written examination is eighteen hundred dollars and will be absorbed from the police department's appropriated funding as the sergeant would not be promoted for approximately four months into the fiscal year twenty fourteen. A new sergeant will bring us back to the number of supervisors that the police department had five years ago when the deputy and I were promoted, which has proven to be the most effective in all the years that I have been on this police department. As my worksheet shows, the new sergeant will either work four midnight shifts or a jump shift comprised of two midnights and two evenings, im- implementing the lack of supervision on the late night shifts. I feel that this proposal is a positive move forward for the police department and the town as well as a fiscally creative and responsible move. It will also be a huge morale booster for all of our police officers for full-time and reserve. I will be retiring in less than five years if you are willing, and I feel that we have enough qualified people within our agency to lead this police department. In my opinion, the board of selectmen should never have to go outside to hire a new police chief. A new sergeant will be one more step forward to transitioning the proper people into supervisory roles for the future vision of the Grovelin Police Department. In closing, the deputy and I can answer any questions or concerns that you may have about this proposal. I would appreciate the support of the board of selectmen uh voting in favor of the current proposal before you tonight. Thank you.
Can you define a safety cap? For my benefit and maybe someone and some folks in the public as well.
Sure. A safety cap is based primarily enforces traffic laws and it it handles any type of traffic complaints throughout the town. Over the last year, we have been inundated with uh with calls for traffic complaints. People right here in town hall complaining while trying to get across the crosswalk. And we just, with the amount of calls, our calls increase approximately ten percent every year. And the officers don't have the time to dedicate to traffic enforcement because they have to patrol when there's a call.
Safety cap can also be used for educational purposes. We were hoping maybe we had this wish for quite a while now is to get somebody into the schools more, whether it's different officers or one or two. The safety cap would allow us to have an officer spend more time down at the schools and maybe check detailed sites for uh safety and uh track some of the complaints we've been getting about speeders and uh public development. So it will free up an officer to uh address those. A lot of those quality of life issues are of what we deal with when it comes to speeding and neighborhoods and things.
So the safety cap is an existing piece of equipment we have that's used in a different way?
No, I.
Are we buying a cap?
No, no, we wouldn't be buying a cap, we would just, we would be utilizing.
An existing piece of equipment.
Correct.
So it's how you use it is what defines it as a safety cap.
Correct.
It's more of a position to, like an art, yeah.
Procedure. You have a gentleman, uh male or female, actually, you have can- candidates that are interested in the sergeant's position?
I believe, uh from what I've heard from the union is all the members of the, the all full-time patrolmen are interested in this position in taking the test.
And obviously you're vested with the hiring of that position.
Correct. Well, what my plan would would be is to, as I stated, th- this three-phase process would be one hundred percent transparent and the top scores on all three phases, whoever scored the top on number one would get the position. So my real, really my only involvement in this would be coordinating it and then if you approved it, would be coming to you with a name to ask you to appoint to that position.
So we're appointed?
Yes.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Didn't we already like take the A C O position and initiate the same thing?
Well, uh two days, that's why this is gonna make it a four and two. We use the two days with the A C O. With this money, we're gonna be able to do two more days, so we'll have the regular four and two schedule. So between these two, two and two, we'll have those four days.
Now, how do we handle that in the budget? This, you don't have to list these people as line items, correct? As far as the A C O, the secretary.
The A C O is its own line item.
Was the secretary line item?
Yes. Yeah, the same risk we did with the fire department. I mean, wouldn't they transfer it to town meeting? I don't imagine it'd be a problem with it. The other side going up is when we did lose that, there was a drop in revenue from the R and B fines. I hate to say it that way, but it's pro- probably from sixty thousand now to thirty twenty five, twenty six thousand. We lost that car through the budget cuts and the windmill, a lot of loss of money, all the other fun things the state did to us. So.
That was like fifty five thousand a year we lost.
Yeah, yes, I mean, hopefully when you say sa- when they say safety cap, it's also traffic enforcement, which would, you know, obviously increase revenue. Hate to say it that way, but you expect to see that go back up.
And is a lot of the complaints based on this bridge project, do you think?
No.
I mean, I know cars back up all the way to Jack and that sounds.
No, I know the school requires a lot of attention. Yeah, but one of the problems we have, like as I said earlier, when the officers, they try to address these traffic complaints, but they don't have the time and the dedication, you know. I was actually the safety officer, officer if you remember, uh back in the late eighties. And there would be times, if we had a problem area, I might hit that area three times in an eight-hour shift, spend an hour each time there. The patrol guys can't keep that, they just don't have the the resources.
So what would this do? End up having another person on during the day?
Yes.
So we'd be at five people on during the day?
No, there'll be four, no, there'll be four.
Two of patrolmen, two of officers, and two guys and two guys.
What's, yeah. Yes. What's happening now is, I'm the second, I'm on the schedule. So with this proposal, I'll do like the payroll, I'll do the filings, I'll do a lot of the other, still the court. And what I'm already doing now, it's leaving just one officer on the street, that officer's answering a lot of the calls. That's why we're finding, I think, that traffic problems are on the increase. With this proposal, that safety officer would be able to deal with a lot of the traffic issues. The other officer still would be able to do some traffic, but they'd be able to deal with a lot of the calls that we have. So.
This is.
Are you gonna eliminate um a patrolman and replace with a with a sergeant? Is that what we're doing in the first page?
It is, but the sergeant would still do the patrol functions. Not like when you're in a big city, when a sergeant just comes out to supervise at at the deputy, he's second in command, but he responds to calls and and asks a lot of times.
What about court coverage? Still gonna have an officer for that dedicated to that?
Yes, the deputy is the court liaison, but there's times that, you know, different offices go up depending on the work schedule.
This would allow me to be more dedicated to that because there would be an officer, another officer working. So I could, I could not change my schedule on if I had to commit for court.
But if you're saying back before, we had four supervisory positions.
Yes.
I might be missing, I I know we had two lieutenant, a sergeant, did we have two sergeants?
Yeah.
Two sergeants.
This really is, if you will, a window of opportunity because it's thinking outside the box. It's utilizing money that we have to remain budget neutral. And if if we don't do it now, then really the window closes, there's just no other money. You know, the option would, alternative would be then if if the board's not in favor of it, then we've, when uh we just hired a a a secretary.
And how will that adjust your workload if you did that? Cause you're just saying you have to do the payroll.
No, well, like mine go quite a bit, but that's not my concern. My concern really is is public safety, because we could actually get a, you know, more police officers on the street with that little bit of money.
What we've assessed when we looked this over is that we have enough personnel to do everything you need to do if we can just put them in the right places. We're not looking to add to our employee list. We wanna take the people we have and and put them in the places that would benefit the public safety and the operation of the police department the most.
Right, I mean, I do see that you have numbers on everything, but is this all taken into consideration? Quinn bill increases and everything else, because I don't think that affects you as much as it affects us, right? Or is that all part of that budget?
All part of the budget. I'm assuming when you go through, I mean, there'd be slight adjustments, like you've got the shift differentials in here.
A hundred and twenty six dollar difference.
Right, but what about, does that include?
Wouldn't be any di- wouldn't be any difference in the insurance, there wouldn't be any difference in the retirement cost. The uh Quinn bill part of this?
I don't believe I have the the Quinn bill in there because uh some officers that would be eligible for this do not receive the Quinn bill. That would be a minor adjustment.
Oh, if it comes to bigger adjustments.
Well, it'd be twenty five percent of at max.
Twenty five percent of that.
Send out whatever the difference in pay they get from patrolman to sergeant, which is.
Ten percent, so would only be.
Well, we, no, you, I'd say the max is twenty five. That's that's the worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Someone with a master's degree takes this job.
Right.
But he's already, they're already making, you know, it's in there at fifteen, so it's like ten percent of the difference in the shift differential, which is six hundred bucks basically, that's that's your worst case scenario.
And we could adjust it on the the safety cap shifts of.
You could adjust it, maybe, yeah, you move a couple of shifts during the years of the calls and sick, you're all taken care of, cause we don't pay sick time for, I don't deserve anyone's. It would kinda just wash itself out.
Would it cut back on our reserve use?
It would actually increase it.
It's gonna increase your reserve.
Because we would need to use the reserves in the safety cap.
Maybe two more days a week out of that four and two schedule, we'd have to fill, so it's another like sixteen hours in a rotation.
So are you thinking reserves in the safety cap? Is that really the plan?
Most likely, you know. That's the plan, but I mean, it there would be some flexibility. An officer was gonna go to training or had court, maybe they could go to court and come back and run the safety cap. We can try to get somewhat flexible, but still recognize the union issues.
So basically, by shifting the twenty six, four seventy, thank you, is that the only money that's shifting, or is there something else?
That's real, real.
No, you'd be shifting that amongst those categories. We'd have to come up with, I did that with Rob, obviously you can figure out the exact transfer language, but it should wash out. It'd be kind of akin to what happened, we talked about the other day when uh crime will have to be decided, would be a better use of his salary to put it into the expense budget, and have the existing personnel take over the thing of watching to make sure things aren't bad. It's kind of what they're doing here, they're taking on the additional responsibilities of some of the secretary's paperwork to allow the way to be shifted, what they figure would be a more better use of their money.
And without hiring a secretary, you don't have to worry about uh insurance and benefits.
No, I know, but that's not a variable for your budget, you know.
For my budget, right, for the town.
Yeah, but thinking of the towns.
No, I am, but I'm just saying, but I'm more concerned that you don't, you know how I am.
Yeah.
I just don't like to see you spend all the money that you have, because you can't.
Oh, no, appreciate that, yeah, we we wanna make sure that.
Yeah, we don't have municipal credit cards yet.
No, no, we we realize that this school is strange, and that's why, as you said, it's a window of opportunity to to utilize what we have and we we get pretty creative really, seeing what we're doing now.
No, I know, I know, I I know what we did before with the A C O, you know, are we still switching back and forth with Georgetown?
Yeah, but we've been doing really well covering
Yeah.
our A C O call, but Nancy, I don't think there's been any complaints in
All our inspections have gone, everything's covered.
couple of years. Yeah, I've been overseeing that, you know, we have um a couple officers are kinda stepping up, but um that's actually been working pretty well. That's another quality of life thing for Grovelin Residence, and we try to address every flaw that we can, so that's been working pretty well.
So we're not looking to add another full-time position?
No.
We're just looking to add more supervisory?
Yeah, we found that, we feel there's a need for that, um and I gotta say, a lot of our employees have been great stepping up over the last year, picking up this extra work load with our secretary. But um it's above and beyond their call of duty, and at some point, you know, they may not wanna continue doing what they do. And I'm willing to step up and take on some more of those responsibilities.
Right, I'm gonna ask another question. Is there still any reason that we can't push the payroll stuff more so over to his department?
Again, we don't mind, I mean, it's 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 an Excel, it's an Excel spreadsheet to me, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how much time, time goes in the background or what I can and can't save it, but again, it doesn't bother us at all.
Well, there's there's a few, I mean, anything's possible, but there's there's aspects with that, um as Nancy and Greg know, that the time sheets that we have to deal with. Um and there's, it's it's, it's not your average payroll because of the reserves and the hours and the the overlaps and the in the details that's that's involved.
But I'm just thinking, once they learn how to do it, you know, for the most part, somebody filling out their time sheet should be able to go over there, they should be able to figure it out.
Yeah, except I bet the amount of time that we'll spend communicating back and forth, trying to help them figure it out, it's it's not gonna be worth it, it's gonna be more aggravating.
Yeah, the regular officers are fairly easy, the Quinn bill part of it's fairly easy, the dispatch is fairly easy, with the exception of throwing when they work the hall or something like that, cause sometimes they wanna take time due or sometimes, that's that's the variable in it, because in their contract, they're allowed to either take the pay or the time off, and that's where the variable tracking comes in. Okay, it's 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 questions you'd ask every time you see it, but that's all it is, it's questions.
But there might be some of it, if it would be easy and straightforward, or none of it?
Well, again, I I think it would probably be more aggravating to everyone involved and because we know the system and and.
Right, I mean, I just assume that people are supposed to do payroll to payroll, protect the town, protect the town, you know.
Yeah.
But, all right, like it's just something that I'd still like to see if we can transition at some point, you know, so that it's, I don't like seeing sixteen different departments collecting money, I'd just soon see one doing the payroll. So as far as this goes, all it's doing is adjusting line items around?
Mm-hmm. No, there's, like I said, maybe that six hundred bucks Quinn bill. And most likely, that would be taken care of through the other wage account, just on its natural validity. I mean, even right now, I know people spend the other wage budget by the end of the year, it's just, it's mainly just how often people are sick, it's a variable. Kinda like a veteran's budget, you never know when one's gonna move into town or not move into town, it's just, my best guess is this is budget neutral.
We may be able to save a little bit where if I take a day off, you know, you don't have to fill my shift if we have two patrolmen working with the chief.
Uh, and which is what we did, like during the time you were at FBI camp.
We've been doing, yeah. So you can imagine it saves saves money for what the chief's been doing, and now I can do it. Also, um when I'm taking a day off, he wants to pay all loans, and that would save a lot of money too, so probably can help, you know, for the internal channel.
And even on the flip side, like I said, it it could also be a significant revenue enhancement on the general fund side as well.
No, I I understand, no, I do understand. It's just always a difficult thing in my mind to add more people on in supervisory position, because once you do it, you've kinda done it. And, you know, then the recourse of everyone in town saying, how many full-time people are there again, and how many are in chat? You know, and I'm just trying to think of all those different things.
No, I can appreciate that, but I I don't think this is um too many chiefs.
No, 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 I know, because you've got dispatch and then you've got all the other.
Yeah, it's a good amount of people and uh
Right.
And some of the other jobs that we have officers doing, it it would be nice for them to have one of them to another one to have supervisory experience or responsibility to get compliance with certain things. We have some officers that need to get information or they're trying to get officers to do certain things and.
No, I'm not second guessing you on that, cause I said a long time ago, I want a full-time person on every shift at least.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't want shifts covered by all reserves or whatever, and I know you've done that, so.
In a perfect world, we'd like another full-time, although we're lacking a full-time on midnight, has an open full-time shift on midnight. And now this safety cap could give another full-time, we we know we can't do that.
But for right now, we're not doing that.
We, right, we know we can't do that. That comes along, I thought we were asking.
Yeah, and I.
I'm saying, no, but I'm just saying, we we are trying to get creative and.
No, I I'm glad that you're trying to stay with the new budget, but.
And with all the reserves, that's where we need really, you know, help with supervising, you know. There's a lot of unfunded mandates, there's a lot of different things we have to follow, that we need to stay.
Yeah, the only concern we have going forward with the reserve part is making sure we keep them at that level where they're not consistently working over twenty hours a week. That spread them onto the thing, what doesn't trigger any of the benefit things that they can challenge.
No, we may need.
We've done a good job of it so far, cause I watch and I see how you guys do it, and it's not a consistent thing, so. In other words, if all this stuff went to one guy, it could kinda trigger that stuff.
We may need another reserve or two, once it's it's only just, and that will help with that, you know, make sure that everybody can.
Well, again, like I said before, I'm not gonna tell you how to, I need to find if if this is what you think you need to do. I guess I'm okay with it.
I agree.
Agree.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of questions real quickly on um just the shifts, the operation? You have two scenarios, which one do you prefer, or are you gonna use both, or?
Well, that's a good question. I personally prefer the the jump shift, the two evenings and the two midnights. But when we met with the union, what I explained to them is to keep everybody happy. And the mindset that the deputy and I have is you don't wanna see people go backwards into later shifts unless they want to. You you know, the the goal is always to, you're a junior guy, you start on a midnight, you try to work your way to a nicer, earlier, family-friendly shift. So I would not wanna try to make anyone go backwards, so depending on the officer that was, that got the promotion and we all sat down and worked with the union is where that sh- person, the sergeant, would end up. So at this time, I don't know until I have the the new sergeant, but it will be either one of those shifts.
So you're gonna bring that person into the conversation to kinda get a consensus?
Of the the shift, you mean?
Of the patrol, of the the promoted person who becomes a sergeant, you're basically gonna ask his opinion too.
Correct.
We um had a meeting with with the union, to went over all this and um tried to discuss these topics, so that it was um trans欲しい.
The other good thing here is that we have essentially the, uh at least the whisperings or the beginnings of a succession plan for the department to possibly and probably promote from within.
That would be my.
Chief at some point in the future.
Yes.
That's a, an added benefit. Costs us nothing, so it's a good, it's a good plan. I commend you both.
After the chief, then I leave and Sergeant McDonald leaves, there would be nobody with any supervisory experience after the three of us leave, so this would lift somebody else up and
Right.
give them a chance and see what they do.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I would completely make a motion to accept this, actually the plan that he's proposing. I mean, it's probably a little technical, but it's forwarded.
You can just make a motion to accept proposals submitted by the police department with adjustments to be made at a future town, budgetary adjustments to be made at a future town meeting.
Yeah, we'll stay within that.
Right, within, the transfers will all be within the police department by then.
Uh sure, I'd like to make the motion to accept the proposal from the police chief's deputy. Um with any adjustments, you have to tell me the rest of the words, cause I can't.
Adjustments to be made at the next town meeting.
Okay, adjustments to be made at the next town meeting, thank you for that.
And to stay within there.
And to absolutely stay.
With all transfers coming within the police department.
On the penalty of death.
Well, we're gonna kill him.
Within the uh budget, of course. Fiscal, the next fiscal budget, or the one that's on now, actually.
Right, well, the next transfer is the one that starts July first, we'll pick that first. We have a fall time meeting, we'll do it in the fall, if we don't, we'll do it in the spring, but we'll just act like it has happened.
Nancy, were you able to take my articulation?
No, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you very much, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Good job, thank you. Thank you, congratulations on your uh
Oh, thank you.
your election, we had a shot.
Thank you.
I'll call Jan, I'll uh I'll call Andy tomorrow, and I really thought you were telling me that was all, we're starting to get, we're starting to get the ball.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but now we're gonna have to make a decision, we're gonna have to find a better place to live, I said, quite a nice neighborhood.
You've been getting your notes.
Yeah, that's fine, there's really cycling.
Here, I'll give you this one now. It costs so much to raise.
I know, I have a whole stack, and they don't say Nancy on.
Can't say we don't do our part.
That's right. Thank you, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.
I just wanted to let the board of selectmen know that as of seven o'clock this morning, the addition of building at F L at Bagel School was occupied by staff and students. Kids had lunch in there. Um staff worked all weekend, moved all tables, chairs, kept the equipment. And uh everything went very well.
Three three lunch periods?
No, they they're not changing any of the schedules this year. Not for the last two weeks, it's cool. But uh, no, um.
Didn't everything work?
The kids with the early program showed up and wandered down there and got their um food and stuff like that. And uh demolition has started on the existing cafeteria and that base is uh gonna go. Should everything hopefully done by nine.
Uh, did the gym open today too or?
No, we got one more coat of urethane and then put faceboard on it. But the gym floor is down, it's sealed, the lines are down, everything's there, the basketball hoops, the curtain, everything's painted out. It's it's just waiting for one more coat of lacquer.
So someday we should plan a visit, if you have the committee count.
Did you want to have something in August?
I'd like I'd like to plan something just to uh thank all the people in town that made this, it was a team effort. Started with selectmen, went through Greg, with Fatsy, with Bobby Arkellian, saved this town, couple hundred thousand with his staff. The water department, the electric company, and a lot of other people pitched in, and it was a good team. It was a team effort. There was no eyes in it at all.
Excellent.
No, that's it.
Quick, quickly, I know we have to go into a second session. Today I was shopping in Market Basket and um did not have enough money for my groceries. Does this ever happen to anybody?
No.
And I said, I I cannot come back here. And I'm looking around the store, it's twenty dollar shot. Kim, my knight is shining out.
Now we know why Kim gave me the money. I figured, what the heck, I might as well announce the schools open.
Thank you.
No problem.
That's the kind of town it is.
We should have an open house for the public.
Well, we have graduation in the new facility.
That what has happened is that a lot of the the older kids, the sixth graders, are absolutely ecstatic because they get to graduate the new cafeteria or stage. Um so, but uh I was kind of holding off, and I I agree with you that we should have something, but I'd like to get the the other addition renovated, which is gonna take about eight, nine weeks.
So then do it all at once.
And that's fully done by August thirteenth, so we could we could get something before school kicks off in in the last couple of weeks of August, maybe. Just to uh put out a big thanks to a lot of people that worked hard.
Okay, great.
But it might, thank you again.
It's a construction meeting.
Oh.
Did Mike have something quick too, or are we gonna have to come down?
Yeah, I I just actually wanted to tell you that the um town forest um reopening is occurring this Saturday from eleven to one. And you are invited to attend. Hopefully, the weather and rain will hold off, but.
If it's raining, I probably can make it, because I know everything.
And uh the water department will be um dedicating their new tower, so.
Is there a time that they'll do that? You said eleven to one, but.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. I'll email you. I'm applying that at the timetable tomorrow.
And what are we doing between eleven and one? Is it tours or?
It's like an open house for the whole town forest.
Is he at the top, you at the bottom?
Uh, yeah, actually, I think it's down the bottom.
Oh, okay. Yeah, in the wood shop.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
I've hiked it several times the last year, so as it was going up, so.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you, Wayne. Thanks.
The only other thing, I I met with the water department and they were wondering about the purchase and sale. And I thought since Bill was here, he probably doesn't know firsthand, but um we're still waiting on those purchases and sales.
And that's being done by John, I can't remember.
Yeah, John's working on that. He's worked with us, but they were just concerned, wanted me to express their concern anyway.
Now, is it on iron that we're held up or on the the cells?
No, this was, I thought, you know, Mattingly, I mean, he had sent out an email, asked everybody to respond to what their concerns were. I responded, and I guess no one else actually sent out a repute. Like, I haven't heard from the water department, I haven't heard from you, you gotta get on Mattingly. That was funny.
Yeah, no, the the, they're all set with Bussing and Mattingly. The only.
Who's that?
The water department.
Well, they need to tell him that.
Yeah, because he sent out a thing saying anybody were he concerned. I said, all my concerns related with Mattingly's done. I haven't seen the final Bussing yet.
Yeah.
But.
All right, so I'll.
I mean, Mattingly to me was good to go. I had no problem.
I had forwarded to you and Tom the other day.
Yeah. Yeah.
You responded to me, but um Tom hasn't.
Oh, okay. All right. He's still not gonna finalize until he gives them all the stakeholders.
So we're almost there by the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation.
Did you guys discuss that invoice, will you down there?
Yes.
Pay it from CPA.
Okay, um.
We'll do.
Do you have any email?
I think the only other thing we're gonna have, we have an executive session coming up. We've already done the agendas, the warrants. We have some things to sign, property use permits and correspondence. So Tracy, once we come out of executive session, we're gonna call it a night.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you able to just shut everything off if you're gonna make your motion?
All right, so we're gonna go into executive session in accordance with provisions of Mass Turnover Law thirty A, section twenty one A, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Um the if this was in an open meeting, it may have a detrimental effect on the litigation proc- position of the town. And I'd like to second that.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Korski, yes?
Yes.
It has to be DeMoy, yes.
DeMoy, yes.
Gray, yes. Okay, Trace, thank you.
Thank you.
For our viewing.
For our viewing.